All right, call the order of the King George County Planning Commission. You stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as one.
By his, Father once again, we thank you for allowing us together in this place, the Lord. We ask that you guide our hearts and minds as we go about the county's business, the Lord. We ask that you keep us safe from any hurt, harm, endanger seen and unseen as we leave this place. These are the blessings we pray. Amen.
Hey, so open the floor for public comment. If you are here to give public comment, please keep your comments to under three minutes. Anyone? Stein's, anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
We'll close public comment. Approval of minutes. Take these one at a time. September 12th.
Mr. Chairman, I have one minor modification to the minutes on September 12th. I was not present for that meeting. I was not even on the board. Even though they have me listed as in attendance.
That's fair.
There we go.
Any other comments?
None here.
Motion to accept. Second?
I'll second it.
All favor.
And one abstention.
All right, minutes for October 17th.
I'm sorry.
Any comments? Motion to accept.
I'll make motion. We accept the meeting minutes from 17 October 2023.
Second?
Second.
All favor? One abstention. Oh, actually, I need to abstain from September because I wasn't here. And I've already downed too. All right, naval supports, activity, South Potomac, community planning liaison officer, no comment. Any plans for review? None. Okay. Public hearing, case number 23-11-ZS01. King George County Planning Commission will hold a public hearing to receive comments on proposed adoption of new King George County zoning and subdivision ordinance. This case concerns comprehensive ordinance overhaul and modernization, which was initialized in 2021 through a series of work sessions.
All right, well, thank you very much for having us tonight. My name is Tori Haynes. Joining me tonight is Rebecca Cobb. We are with the Berkeley Group. We're very pleased to be here tonight to present you with the full draft ordinance for consideration at tonight's public hearing. Tonight, we'll briefly go through our process to date, seeing a lot of familiar faces. You've seen some of these slides before, but I will just breeze through them in case anyone at home is watching and hasn't seen them before. I will go over the proposed ordinance purpose and content, review the draft ordinance, and discuss next steps. So here is our project overview. We are clearly here at the very end of our process. We have gone through the investigation and public engagement phase, content development, where we worked closely with you all and the board to develop these articles. And we are now in the adoption phase at the tail end for public hearings. The material in the ordinance covers the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. Zoning, of course, regulates your land uses and development patterns, and the subdivision ordinance regulates the actual division or merging of parcels. And why are we updating the ordinance? To comply with new Code of Virginia requirements. Those do come along every year. There are probably some things in there that we needed to get a little more up to speed on, clarifying language, making the ordinance more understandable, modernizing to address modern issues, new uses, things that have emerged, as well as modern best practices, streamlining content to be more user-friendly, easier to find and interpret. Hopefully, this has a more logical progression through the ordinance. And then revisions with your comprehensive plan in mind to make sure we're achieving goals that are set out in your comp plan. What's in the zoning ordinance? Of course, your zoning districts, the underlying districts that are regulating all of the parcels in the county, your district standards, so things like your setbacks, height requirements and other design, excuse me, and other district standards, uses, your by right uses, your special exception uses, where those can be permitted and not permitted, your use standards, so things specific to certain uses that might have special considerations, and then community design standards, things like your lighting, your signage, the things that people see and that really affect the aesthetics of your community. So what's a zoning look like? This is your zoning map currently. Now, all of our revisions didn't actually change the map, so your zoning map will basically stay the same, but we did add some, I think at least one new district, which we'll get to later. Some general changes since our last meeting in September. We incorporated the edits as directed at the August and September pre-adoption work sessions. We incorporated some additional language that was supplied by your county attorney, and we clarified ordinance provisions, definitions, and use matrix items for consistency and correction as identified at those meetings. Our proposed ordinance structure, we are proposing 11 articles covering everything from administration through your districts, your various use performance standards and community design standards. We did put your subdivision ordinance in here, as you all know, and we updated and refined your definitions. And so we will go through each of these in detail again. Article one is your sort of establishing and housekeeping article, make sure that it appropriately ties to state code. It establishes the overall management of the ordinance for conformity, conflicts, the effective date, which will be important coming up. And some major changes since the last meeting is that we clarified application status relative to that effective date. I think there were some questions there on how that would work. So we did put in some language to clarify a complete submittal that's eligible for review versus a complete application that addresses all comments and is eligible for approval consideration. The latter can continue with the ordinance under which it was developed, but the former would, as it's resubmitted, would need to go and comply with the new ordinance if it's after the effective date. Article two deals with your administration, so appointment of your zoning administrator and subdivision agent, Planning Commission, and the Board of Zoning Appeals, as well as their powers and duties, your meeting procedures, as well as enforcement of violations and fees and fines. One of the changes that we made, the underlying changes, was we added criminal penalties and increased civil penalties to align with state code, and we also revised the fee schedule and provisions for delinquent taxes and charges. Some other major changes since September include updating the variance definition. We updated that per county attorney's comments to be more in line with state code, as well as some clarifications on violations and penalties for state code consistency. Article three is dealing with your permit and application processes, your submittal requirements, rezonings, proffers, special exception permits. So all of your procedural items are covered in Article three. One of the major changes was concept, allowing concept plans with applications, then site plans submitted with admin approval to be a little more business friendly. We clarified when a site plan has to be submitted and what's required in the site plan, so tried to tighten up those provisions a little bit. Some major changes since the last meeting, we clarified proffer language to clarify, make it easier to understand what materially effect means, which is the user density. We clarified the performance bond, 30-day provision, site plan language referencing conceptual plans. We clarified the requirement for traffic impact analysis to be in accordance with the King George County Development Guide, clarified the application provisions, BZA procedures, variance review standards, and right-of-way dedication requirements. In Article four, this covers all of your primary zoning districts, so all the things that you see in the list there. These district abbreviations remain the same, but certain redistricts were renamed to better align with what the intent of that district is. District standards have been organized into tables and updated where needed, so a little more user-friendly there. And we relocated provisions related to use performance standards, community design standards, stormwater management, and open space. So those have been relocated elsewhere in the ordinance in different articles. Overall, we added some height maximums for all districts. We increased the density in R3 from eight to 12 units an acre, and we increased the industrial district size setbacks. We also added setbacks for cluster development. Some major changes since the last meeting, we further clarified the calculation method for steep slopes, brought in a definition to make it very clear there. We added exterior stairs to the list of architectural features that can project into a setback, so things like eaves, chimneys, wanted to make sure that those were captured there. We clarified density calculations to be per gross acre, and we clarified that building height measurement, the measurement type based on the roof type, so making sure that different roof types have an appropriate height measurement method. In our overlay zoning districts, we have the Chesapeake Bay overlay, floodplain management, highway corridor, and military compatibility area. We have new text that provides the overall purpose for the overlay districts. We have a new abbreviation for your floodplain management overlay district. The military compatibility overlay district is new. We did want to clarify its understanding that the map for that ordinance has not been adopted yet, so we did just want to send a reminder that that does need to be completed. And then your wetlands and stormwater ordinances have been relocated from the zoning ordinance to a separate, to a separate chapter in your county code, so that also needs to be adopted separately. So just keep that in mind. And some major changes since our last meeting, we clarified the submittal requirements to allow electronic copies and corrected some BZA determination language. In Article six, this is our use matrix with all of the uses that are established, where they can be, where they can be done in each district, and whether it's by right or by special exception. So we put all your uses into an easy-to-follow, hopefully, matrix, where you'll see in the right-hand column, it tells you exactly where to go if there are associated use standards. We consolidated some uses, added modern uses, and made sure that we were consistent with state code. Some changes since last, since the last meeting in September, we further clarified the accessory dwelling unit definition. We are now permitting rec facilities, non-commercial, by special, special exception in all zoning districts, and we changed these permissions for nursing home from by right to special exception in R3. Article seven deals with the use performance standards, so standards that are going to be specific to certain special uses. We reorganized these and streamlined the existing standards for user-friendly readability. We introduced new standards for entirely new uses, things like agritourism, accessory dwellings, mobile restaurants, and EV charging stations. We also have updated standards to address parking requirements, setbacks from dwellings and other restaurants and signage. And then for industrial uses, we also increased or clarified standards for landscaping and buffering, and in the next article, we added indoor noise provisions that we talked about in the spring. Some major changes from the last meeting, we clarified the home occupation provisions that we were discussing with permissions and hours in operation. We revised the telecom facility provisions to be in line with state code, clarified the battery energy storage facility provisions based on the fire chief's comments and our previous discussion, removed the maximum lot acreage for utility-scale solar, clarified multifamily provisions to allow multiple principal structures for things like townhomes and apartment complexes, and clarified agritourism, electric vehicle charging stations, and short-term rental provisions. Article eight is the community design standards, so this is the look and feel of the county, so lighting, landscaping, screening, parking and loading, and signs, other community standards like open space and your utilities. We addressed lighting in this ordinance now universally instead of just the highway corridor. We've introduced some tree measurement standards and tree preservation standards, and introduced a new concept of transitional buffers between conflicting uses. Shared parking has been increased from 10 to 50%. We have new bicycle parking provisions to encourage more bike-friendly development. We have revisions to sign height, so that's now based on districts. We have some off-site sign provisions with parameters, and more detail about open space requirements and noise standards for those industrial uses. The noise provisions for annual and initial testing. Since the last meeting, we have added complaint-based testing to the industrial noise provisions as discussed, clarified some parking design standards in the RPA dealing with gravel or grass parking, and clarified provisions for temporary signs to be in line with state code. Article nine deals with nonconformities. This was generally just cleaned up to be more in line with state code. So whether it's a nonconforming use, a nonconforming lot, or a structure, there are various provisions for how that use or structure can go on, if certain things need to be updated on it to make it conforming with current regulations. One thing that our updates did do is allow more flexibility for internal improvements of residential homes. For example, residential homes that may be somewhere that's now in a commercial district, it's going to be a lot easier for them to do basic maintenance on their homes, whereas before they were in a nonconforming situation, or they still are, but it'll be easier for them. And there were no major updates to that article since our September meeting. Article 10 deals with subdivisions. So we have placed that here into the zoning ordinance, I believe before it was separate. So this article is going to deal with defining your types of subdivisions, what the design requirements are, guarantees and bonding, the review procedures, and final fact procedures. We made sure that it was updated to be more in line with state code, added the appropriate references, and corrected a few requirements. We updated the family subdivision process as well, extended some of the ownership length of time to be a little bit longer, meaning that people now must own the lot for five years before dividing, and the holding time afterwards was extended from five to 15 years. There are still some circumstances that people can get out of that if they need to. Some major changes since the last meeting. If you recall, lot remnants was a discussion, so we have allowed lot remnants to be less than minimum lot size if, say, it's just for a BMP or just for a community amenity like a small park. We clarified that a driveway serves one residence, a shared driveway serves two, and a private street serves three or more. I wanted to remove any ambiguity there. We clarified additional provisions for public and private streets, things like the pavement width and the upgrade triggers. We revised the required access points and clarified that exceptions can be granted by the Planning Commission, clarified some procedures for flat review and approval, and allowed townhome developments to front on a private street, which is something your ordinance actually does now, and so we've put that back in at request. And in Article 11, this is the final article in the ordinance dealing with definitions, we've consolidated and updated definitions, made sure they were in line with state code, and we've also organized them by topic, so they will be a little bit easier to find. And we did establish a few new definitions, some of, since September, the new, so accessory dwellings, things like that, that we just talked about in the other articles, and we also added the new definition for electricity generating facility, which came out of our spring discussions. All right, so that was our very quick overview of our article updates. I'll turn it over and ask if there are any questions or clarification.
So awesome job. I think y'all have done a great job with this, and thanks for shepherding us through this over the last year and a half or so. I know this is sort of a late addition, but a couple people have come to me, residents locally have come to me. I think the answer to this is no, but I wanted to verify and then try to see if we could slip something in, not slip something in, but modify the language prior to adoption. Landfills are not by right and industrial, correct? Or are they? Like any landfill or proposed landfill would be a special exception if I'm correct, which I'm not always. Is it by right?
I thought it was special exception, but I'm...
It should be a special exception.
That's what I'm hoping we can make it. And I'm sorry for the on-the-spot question. I just haven't had time to run it down myself.
I wonder if it's based off material that's put in it. That's a good question.
I thought Gary memorized that whole thing.
Ross would have, Ross would know. Where's Ross?
Right, so landfill falls under the used utility service major, which requires special exception in any district.
In any district? Okay, okay. So just wanted to verify that. So I'll defer to the commissioners. Is that acceptable as is? Okay, thank you. And I'll go back to the earlier comments. Thank you all again for all you've done. Appreciate it. Done a great job on this, I think personally, and I appreciate you getting us up to, up to code and up to modern standards and working with us through this whole process. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Just a quick question. I looked through this for the table that outlines the parking space requirements for the different uses, commercial and so forth. There was one in the old ordinance, but I didn't, I couldn't find it. Maybe when you get a chance, you could just reference the section where we might be able to find that for easy reference. Thanks.
So Article eight is your community design standards. Division five is the parking. And then Table eight-five is your minimum off-street parking requirements. And so it lists the uses to the left-hand column and then the number of spaces required to the right.
Perfect. Thank you.
That is page eight-thirty.
Thanks a bunch.
I have a quick question about the industrial noise standards. There's a table under Section 810-3 that talks about the maximum industrial noise, and in the peach-colored block, it says within a half a mile of. Can you explain to me what that means?
Sure. Basically, with the noise provisions, this is saying that if an industrial, if a property with an industrial use is within a half mile of an A1 district, in A2, basically an ag district or a residential district, so it would be the trigger for these particular noise provisions. So for example, if an industrial use is just surrounded by industrial on all sides for miles and miles, it's not going to be as strict because they're not going to be a nuisance necessarily on typical residential or rural properties. However, if they are within a proximity that could maybe feasibly be heard by a loud industrial use, that's when these provisions would come into play, these decibel standards specifically.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. I am happy with the revisions made in that area.
Any other questions?
Those are requests that were sent to me to distribute to you so they could, you could see them before they had the opportunity to speak at public comment.
We should reserve comment then until they come in and speak then, I suppose, right?
Yes, sir. Unless the commission has any more questions for staff or the Berkeley Group, then public comment should follow.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll open the floor for public comment. If you would, please come up, state your name, address, and if you would also keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Chuck, thanks for your time, Commission and Berkeley Group. My name is Edwin Vizi, address 8267 Lighthouse Lane in King George. My family became the owner of the Eagle Bay subdivision on the Potomac roughly 20 years ago, and we've been slowly continuing development. We're coming to the stage now of submitting a new section for development. Our engineers and I got together, we started looking at the potential of the changes from this draft ordinance and how it might affect what we're doing depending on submission date. My, maybe there's a question for the Berkeley Group or potentially add language to the 10.3.7 concerning block length. We have a fairly rural design to the community, and we want to continue that. The block length limits now of 600 feet are pretty restrictive, forcing us to either add more pavement, change the character of the development, and we were hoping for either an extension of that block length limit or a potential waiver to preserve the character of a community like we're trying to design. I do have a visual aid if there's any, any interest in looking at that. But our intent is to try to minimize the development on the land we have and preserve the rural character, so any consideration would be appreciated. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Gilchrist. I'm with Open Road Renewables, and I'm in Charlottesville, Virginia. We've been involved with the public comment process for the entire ordinance and really appreciate your receptiveness and all the time you've put into it, and thank you to Berkeley Group as well. You'll find a few proposed changes in front of you to the utility scale solar and the battery storage sections of the ordinance. So I'll start with solar. There are just two proposed changes to the solar ordinance. The first related to groundwater testing and the second related to wetlands impact. For the groundwater testing comment, since there's never been a documented case of groundwater contamination caused by solar panels, we recommend focusing on soil testing instead, and any impact would be detected in the soil long before any impact to groundwater would occur. So that's the first comment there. The recommendation is to delete the few sentences on groundwater testing and replace it with these three sentences here in the red line on soil testing. Regarding the wetlands impact, we agree that the avoidance of wetlands is very important. However, minor wetlands crossings are often necessary to construct a utility scale project. For example, constructing a small culvert just to connect part of the solar array that might be locked by wetlands to a project entrance. And the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers conducts a rigorous review whenever you have to do that. So that's comment number two. We're asking to add these two sentences to the end of that section. For the two battery storage, the two battery storage changes fall into two categories. The first has to do with practical considerations with screening and setbacks between the substation parcel and the battery storage facility. Typically, the battery and the substation are located on two separate parcels that are adjacent to each other. Because the substation would be owned by the utility, the battery would be owned by the project owner. So that's what comments three and four cover here, basically just adding half a sentence to each one, exempting the setback and screening from that spot that's right between the battery and the substation that it's connecting to. And the final comment has to do with the fact that there are a lot of prescriptive elements in the storage ordinance that will likely become obsolete pretty quickly as battery technology and the national standards are evolving. For example, the ordinance calls for active fire suppression, but even the latest NFPA fire safety standards are recognizing that active fire suppression does not work well and can actually make battery storages less safe. So we urge you to do what the ordinance already does really well, which is to rely on national standards and fire officials versus imposing these restrictions that are just a snapshot of what's in there right now. Thank you for your time. I'll be here if you have any questions on those points, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, but they're not going to have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
At this point, we will close public comment, and we'll open up to the commission for question discussions.
I have one question about the issue regarding the training facility definition. Did the Board of Supervisors take any action on our recommendation?
Nope.
They approved it as presented, so no, sir, not off of your recommendation.
No longer on our to-do list, and it's incorporated in the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Unless we change it. They approved it as... Yeah, they just pushed it right all through.
I have just two questions. Do we have soil testing in our ordinance, or we don't? We just have water? And then I remember some conversation about the relying on the NFPA 855 standards.
Police training facility.
Did we add anything about a deadline for compliance as the document gets updated? Is that something we should maybe say that, you know, as it gets updated regularly? You've got a certain amount of time to get into compliance with the new regulations?
I think in most places where we reference either state code or like the NFPA, we say, or as amended, so meaning that, you know, if that changes, then it's referencing whatever changes occur in other state or federal codes.
So speaking about the battery and the storage and the recommendation that was made, whether we put in the requirement for a fire suppression system or anything else, if we then say, you know, to meet the current code or, you know, or as amended in the future, however we worded that, doesn't make any difference whether we put that in there or not, right? So I think the intent, or at least my intent, was that wherever we can, we use established federal or state codes so that it's clear to the applicant that that's really what they're following. We may put in a few words that stress certain things, but, you know, from my perspective, I don't think I was intending to add to or, you know, pile on top of those codes and requirements.
All right. The text that you're talking about, you can see in his sheet there that it says, you know, that it's built based on and approved by the fire chief according to NFPA 855 standards as amended. So then if those 855 standards change, this is still saying basically, meet those standards, whatever they may be.
Right, so I guess with that explanation, I don't feel the need to reword it. It's just going to happen automatically.
Correct. Yeah, you're right. There's no, there's no need to take it out. If it changes, it changes, and our standards will change with it.
I think...
So if we start at the beginning of that open road document, soil testing, I think I agree with this soil testing. That's probably more, it's probably a better way to find if there's a problem rather than putting wells and checking wells and things like that for groundwater testing. The next issue on it was the wetlands crossing. We are under, so everything solar is special exception, correct? All the way through?
Except industrial, I think. I think industrial is by right.
Do you know which one on that? Because if it's by special exception, I have no problem with putting the crossings because we're going to have to approve them anyway. If you would have to have a crossing, it would, I mean, you'd have to have it.
Utility scale solar was switched to special exception and industrial. So it is special exception across the board based on the spring discussions.
So comment two, I'm good with because we'd have to approve it anyway when it comes through. So if it's something that makes sense, we'll approve it. So I agree with that second one. How do you guys feel on the screening? If it's connecting parcels with the two pieces?
I would say...
Probably makes sense to get rid of it, right?
I would say.
I'm okay with, since you raised that issue.
So as you...
Take it out of screening when it's next to a substation, but, or that is owned industrial, you could have another industrial lot that for whatever reason doesn't want to see that battery, that doesn't have a substation on it.
Well, it says except for the adjacent parcel with an electric substation.
That's what I...
Which is the battery.
Except for the electric substation, period. This or that is owned industrial, you know, you may not want to be looking at that, it may not be, your neighbor may not want to see that, but not a big deal either way. But I would just end, I would say just end the sentence after, with an electric substation, period. Except from an adjacent parcel with an electric substation, period. But it's not a big issue.
How would this apply if a road was passing between the two parcels? We would, we would still consider that adjacent, right? Even if there was a public road there?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
The rest of the... I would say in terms of that term adjacent, that was one thing that I was going to ask you all, is that the rest of the ordinance does refer to adjacent, it does include across the road. So if you didn't want to include that, that would need to be clarified.
Okay, so I guess we need to, if, I think I'm good with three and four as long as they are absolutely connecting, and I don't know how we write that.
If I can go back, Mr. Myers, number one. Soil testing versus groundwater monitoring, do you think it'd be advisable to delete that section in its entirety or just add soil testing in addition to? Because my concern about that is groundwater. I get it that maybe there's never been an instance of it before, but suddenly we end up with some major solar farm that's, you know, as big as, you know, some of the other recent rezoning things, then what, you know, that could, that could have an impact that's unprecedented. So I don't know that I would, I don't know that I'd want to delete it. I wouldn't mind adding to it just as a safeguard, because if you start talking about, you know, hundreds and hundreds or thousands of these things leaching or potentially leaching, I think it could be, you know, I don't know that we want to, I don't know that we want to give up that, give up that right for that option.
Yeah, I concur. I'm a little concerned about, you know, potential other chemicals. It might not be something that comes out of the solar panels themselves, but they're doing a lot of, you know, weed killing.
Right, right.
And other fertilizers or whatever it is, where there's a lot of concern about leach agent stuff coming off of large industrial-type facilities like that, getting into the, getting into the water.
So I guess the question would be, what is the advantage of not testing the water? Is there, so I'm being hypothetical, I guess, if you will. I mean, like you, I don't, I don't see, I don't, there's no, there's no advantage by not testing the ground. It's only adding, add testing soil with, with testing water.
Do we make any statement in here that the owner of the property has to pay for the testing?
Yeah.
That would be the benefit to the, you know, to the property, to the property owner.
That's true.
Is if they have to pay for this periodic water testing.
And share, obviously with the county, the results of that test. Because as you write, I was going to point that out as well, same thing. It says soil testing shall occur, but who's...
We don't necessarily mandate who is paying or who is responsible for those tests.
And does it have to be by an independent third party? Typically, you wouldn't want that.
Well, yeah, and that makes me wonder, does, like, the EPA, do they require such testing at this junction for soil and water? You know, are there any federal mandates in place already?
So it's a question of who does the testing? You know, is it an independent party or is it the applicant themselves? It's a question of who pays for it. It's a question of who is it shared with, and it's a question of what do you do if the test is somehow non-compliant?
Well, I think the EPA watches all of that. I think your soil testing is going to be much more reactive.
Yeah.
I mean, if you have groundwater problems, you've had soil problems for some time.
Sure, sure.
So...
And that kind of fits, kind of fits to what they're, what they're saying, that if you test the soil, you're going to, you're going to perhaps see something well before it gets to the water table.
This is actually my field. It depends where the water flows. The water is, if you've got drainage systems, all the water collects in a sump or a location, the soil under there is going to have a much higher concentration. The water there is going to have a much higher concentration than where it feeds in to. I support the idea of having additional water testing, but where you test, how you test, is really going to drive your results. And, and don't automatically assume that, you know, a particular soil test site is going to reflect the burden of a chemical in a, where it's concentrated by water.
I guess my thought is, is that the comment about, you know, there's never been an issue with water is based on past practices and current practices. I don't know what's going to come in the future, future in terms of a change in the chemicals they use to clean, to remove land growth, that kind of thing. So I'm sort of leaning towards the idea of, I think the soil one, yeah, I think that's a good idea. We sort of didn't think about that. So adding that to the water testing.
Clarity around who does what to who.
Well, I don't know, I can't tell you. I know exactly how it's worded in the current ordinance, but, you know, it should be on the applicant.
Well, that's the thing. If it's in the ordinance, then, then the applicant's going to have to be responsible for meeting the requirements in the ordinance. So the burden would be on the applicant.
Does the ordinance require an independent third party to conduct the analysis, or can they use in how their own in-house personnel for that?
I think that that professional would be credentialed, similar to an engineer. The developer probably hires their own engineer to do the plans. They are, if they're a stamped and approved and legit engineer, then that would be an appropriate submittal. So it would be the same with the soil testing. The professional would need to be credentialed. To the administrator, upon receiving that submittal, would need to double-check that they are someone credentialed and permitted to do such work. But the burden would ultimately be on the applicant to ensure that they are hiring someone that can do that and that is licensed.
That's the way it's written now, yeah.
Then enforcement would be the county?
Right. One of the submittal requirements is essentially making sure that, yes, plans are sealed, any studies or other tests are also done by credentialed professionals and as part of the submittal package. If it, if that document would not be appropriately sealed or otherwise conducted and the administrator noticed that, then that would be something that they would have to discuss with the applicant to get an acceptable submittal.
And they're under an obligation to turn that over to us within a timeframe, and all that statutory construction is in there now, is what you're saying? Or you can make sure that it is?
So right now, it says that, you know, this testing has to be conducted every five years. It doesn't talk specifically say, you know, this cost is on the applicant, but just like, you know, the next item below that is security fencing, and that doesn't say the applicant has to pay for and put up the security fencing. So it's the same concept, that all of the requirements here are required, you know, to be provided and paid for by the, you know, company or individual.
How long do they have to turn over those results? If they do the soil tests, all good, how long do they have to turn it over to the county?
The text does not say, you know, within what timeframe of completing the test.
Nuclear tide, different DCVs.
I would think you'd want to have some obligation upon them to share it, good, bad, or indifferent.
So my colleagues, coming at it from a legal point of view, I guess I would rely upon the county's attorney. Do you need those kind of specific details in this document or not? But, you know, I certainly understand what he's talking.
You just don't want to have them sitting on it for months and months, you know?
Well, I mean, our county makes us pump our septic, and they send us a notice reminding it's time, and then it's on us to prove that we're in compliance. I would assume that this would be similar. I mean, any of these things, and we all know that there are opportunities for abusing our ordinances. I mean, somebody could test three years, find a problem, fix it, and, you know, carry on or test somewhere else and not disclose it. I mean, we cannot necessarily... Well, that's what I'm saying. If, let's say they test in three years and they don't submit it because they found something, and then they test somewhere else in five years and submit it and it's accurate. All I'm saying is, is all of these ordinances have the potential to be abused. And so I... And so I don't know that we can control every potential scenario.
Well, you can just write it in and you're done, right? So if they had whatever, 30 days to...
Now you get in a situation where, like, you tell them that they have to test every five years, all right? Well, if they wanna test at one-year increments...
That's up to them.
We don't need to want it, so...
I assume that the five years is the maximum they could have, right?
But if we start trying to use it every five years, right? I guess my concern is getting too specific and putting a real burden on the operator or the developer when he's asking for approval. I mean, we tell him he needs to do a test every five years. How far do we take it? Tell him how far apart the test sites have to be? You know, I mean, like an archaeological dig or something?
You know, you could go there, but I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, I concur. There's a lot of details that we don't wanna get into with every one of these parameters, as you brought up, right? We could be specifying, oh, I have to do a soil test on, you know, once every five acres or every 10 acres, or do we wanna get to that level of specificity? We just say a soil test. It's a soil test. Leave it to the county to...
And I agree with the comment that all of these are subject to somebody figuring out a way to get around them or violate them without sharing it with us. But if we wanna... I do think we should add in soil testing, and I'm good with this comment, you know, about initially and every five years. If we don't have to get too specific about where you test and how many times you test and all that kind of stuff, I'm good with leaving it out. If it turns out to be a problem, we have the opportunity to revise these things. Now, that won't do us any good on the one that's already gotten through, but...
How would you know if there's a problem?
You don't have any guarantees, is I guess what I'm saying. I mean... Well, I mean, I guess in my mind... Well, I do think they should...
So they do have to share the results. So, excuse me. So right now, the text says that they have to test every five years, and then line two says that they have to provide that to King George County. So, you know, that doesn't mean that, you know, 30 days after that testing, they have to provide it, but sometime within that five-year mark, that one-year mark, that needs to be provided, right? Or the county can come say, hey, it's been five years. You haven't provided us with your water testing. Give us the water testing or you're in violation.
Well, if it says that, then that's sufficient for me.
So are we good with soil testing instead of water testing?
Yeah, I would like to add...
I don't think we should have both. I think we either pick soil or water. I think soil's better.
I do think soil's better if we feel confident that soil testing protects the water. But no, then I would say let's do both.
Add it.
Add it.
Yeah, I would recommend we do both, and I do also like, I know it's not the outcome that Open Roads was asking for, but I do like their suggestion here of also providing a baseline before construction, the 90 days after operations, and then the five-year periodic thereafter. It helps them not get into a situation where five years down the road, they do a test and find out that the soil and water's been contaminated, but it wasn't their fault, right? They have to have a baseline to go from. So I like their suggestions of adding those couple early checks and not just putting it as a five-year periodic. And I would do both. It's my recommendation. Whether we wanna combine it into one section or have them as two separate sections is up to the writers of ordinance, how they think is the best way to approach that.
You don't have a problem, Harry, or you for the well. But anyway.
Okay. All right, so did we sufficiently discuss that one? Becca, you got that one?
Yeah, so I have that we will add the soil testing, leave the water, and add in the soil testing, I think was the consensus on that. You talked briefly about the screening and that you didn't want it to be, to account for across a road, but adjacent on the same side of the road is okay? Did we land there?
Contiguous parcels on the same side of the road. I think we're good there.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we care about other industrial parcels? Do we want it to be only adjacent to their energy storage or their energy generation facilities?
It lists only the energy, the electric substation and batteries, right?
No, it says other industrial.
Okay, I think we're okay. All industrial, I'm okay with that. Industrial's industrial.
I'm fine with that. As long as they're adjacent, not across the street, yes.
All right, and the only other one we had, well, we have two, which is the wetlands crossing. Is everybody okay with wetlands?
Yes.
On it, okay? Because that's all special exception. And then we have the battery, the number five, which I think we already have an answer to, right?
Yeah, I think you were... It sounded like you were satisfied with the text as is because we have as amended and we're looking to that federal code.
Do I remember correctly that we had discussed the wording that talked about individual battery modules, that that may not be applicable to have it at the individual battery level?
We did talk about that.
I remember during our joint session that we had some discussion about that.
Right, and then I think we decided the NFPA, the NFPA standards would address the appropriate practice for the appropriate chemistry or technology.
Yeah, and the scaling of how often, you know, how big, how often, how many monitors do you have to do? You don't want it down to every battery, right?
Okay, so I think we're good with that document, right?
Did we wanna discuss the gentleman's request about the block, so?
Yes, that was the next thing with the block size. That would be under the plans, right?
I think...
Come in. Can we special exception?
I think that should stay special exception.
When it happens?
Yeah.
So just come with the plan if it makes sense. We'll be game, I think.
I'm afraid if we make it too large, it's gonna open it up.
And the last one was the letter wood partners on the height. And I think that's also when they come with a project, let's look at it and move forward. I know we spent some time on that with the supervisors, so...
I kinda looked at it, and it's one of those things, like, we just get it. We spent a lot of time, I think, working through it, came up with a cogent way forward. They're not here to talk about it. Do they really care? I mean...
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about passing this without having some discussions with their chief.
Or the reason that they wanted it. I mean, I'm not concerned with entertaining that.
Whenever we get the project, we can look at it and move forward with it there.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Anything else?
All right, then do we have a motion?
I don't think we need one, right?
Do we need to talk about the effective dates or when everything is gonna go into effect?
For a plan, effective date, have the supervisors...
I think what I remember is we talked about what a completed package was. I don't know that we set any dates, or is it our responsibility to set dates?
I think we did not set specific dates purposely. I think that's where the discussion led.
The supervisor said they didn't want it effective the day it was signed, which makes sense. So a month or 60 days after the signing, it goes into effect, I think was one of the things thrown around. I think something like that is very sensible, but, you know...
Well, that's what they...
Pick a date, 30, 60, 90?
Well, that's what they had gone through, where in the process the applicant was. So once these were adopted and...
So I think we discussed that simply submitting an application isn't good enough if the application is bad. So it's once the planning office determines that it's a complete application, that's the date we're using.
No, the track.
Because if you just wanna beat the date, you just throw in a piece of garbage. A date. It needs to be a full, complete package acceptable to the planning, to the office and the planning commission.
And so with that said, I think it's the planning commission's duty responsibility to set that date. I don't think it's our, I think we're region.
I was just gonna say that I think the dates, the effective dates, really should be taken the recommendation of our staff. They're the ones that have to deal with the consequences of whatever dates we choose. And so I wanted to give them an opportunity to make a recommendation.
Knowing that we've been doing this for like a year and a half, and most tweaks we're making at this point are minor tweaks.
Yeah, we're doing happy to glad, I think, at this point.
Just spent out for a while, but, okay.
I agree with Mr. Kendrick's point on that. We've worked with an ordinance that was made in 87. It has quite a lot of holes in it. I think that what the Berkeley group has prepared for us has really buttoned up all those, kinda excited to work with that. I would say sooner rather than later. Maybe it's 30 days, maybe that's 45 days after the acceptance date. I'll say I've also spoken with quite a lot of residents and developers who are actually waiting for this new ordinance to be adopted, rather they didn't have the opportunity before, or they've been listening to us this whole time and they've heard what you've said and built their plans to it. So they've been waiting for that. So in order to give them kind of the opportunity for it, I would suggest probably no more than 45 days.
I'm good with that. Yeah, I think 30 days.
Yeah, I appreciate your input.
30 days from when, what do we say?
From when the board of supervisors accept?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So as far as Berkeley's concerned right now, you guys just need to button up the last things we just talked about? And then what, next month, we vote on it? Or can we...
I thought we were voting on it tonight to move forward because we're trying to get it to the board of supervisors for December.
Okay, all right.
That's correct. Tonight, you'll be making a recommendation to the board, and they would have it on their December 19th agenda.
Okay, and you guys will make the changes we talked about tonight? Okay.
So would that change the motion then from effective date?
If I may interject just one thing. In your sample motions, there's one little nuance that the wetlands article needs to be updated as of January 1st. So the hope was that you all would allow for that provision to be deleted from the zoning ordinance and re-implemented in a different part of the county code as of January 1st. So that was the intent for that aspect of the sample motion.
And that's to adjust or accommodate for changes in state code, is that...?
Yes, there's some changes in state code as to the notice provisions for applications.
Cool. Good with me.
So that would be deletions of what sections out of the proposal that we have here, please?
So in Tori's presentation, she mentioned that the recommendation is that wetlands and stormwater, they're currently within the zoning code, that those provisions come out of the zoning code but go elsewhere in the county code. So the action by the planning commission would be to consider a request to delete those from the zoning code at such time that the board of supervisors implements them in another section of the county code.
And Ms. Lackey, that would remove those subject matter material from the jurisdiction of the planning commission?
All right, so how about this? How about we just make it all January the 1st? I mean, that's...
Jurisdiction over wetlands.
Yeah. Because you're already set up for January the 1st, right? The change has to be made January the 1st?
Right, we have to conform our ordinances in the wetlands provision to the state code by January 1st.
So if we make this whole thing January 1st, are we all good? I mean, that's 45 days from now.
So the sample motion, given the course of the discussion, you might all wanna have a different recommendation, but the sample motion stated implementation no earlier than January 1st. So that would accomplish the goal that it could be January 1st for some sections but not others. But if you all wanna make a firm, more firm recommendation, that's certainly within your purview.
That's 45 days, right?
It's...
So if we decide to recommend approval of this to the board of supervisors based on the comments we've made tonight?
Right.
That won't get to them until when?
The 19th of December.
Well, they'd... They have the opportunity to review it prior to that.
Yeah, but they'll meet on the 19th, and that's when they'll vote and say yes and stroke it as of that day, you know, their signature that day. Having it go into effect on January 1st only, what?
11 days, 12 days.
So I still like the idea of, okay, we don't make January 1st, but it goes into effect 30 days later. Does that give you problems?
I don't have any objection to the bulk of the ordinance taking effect 30 days after. What I'm trying to avoid is that we have to amend the zoning code just to pull out the wetlands and put it somewhere else, and then amend it, like, within a month to do other things as well.
Okay, so what...
I would...
I just think you got 45 days from today. I don't think they've been with us the whole project. I don't think they're gonna start changing things next month, I don't think.
You're talking about the board of supervisors, okay? I can go either way. I guess in my mind, it would, in my mind, it would be nice and clean that once we say yes, go forward, and we're sort of talking about doing that tonight, then the board of supervisors gets the hold of it, you know, mid-December, and they can say, yes, we're good with what we've recommended, and they say, yes, we agree. You know, if you wanna make it effective January 1 after that, that's just giving it 11 days, okay? And maybe that's not an issue, I guess. I don't... I just know that it was a topic of discussion at the last joint meeting.
I think to Ms. Lackey's point, my concern would be not just the wetlands thing, but any other changes that might be brought up that whomever the collective they being would wanna swap in or out. And if we just go ahead and memorialize the darn thing and just say we're done with it, then it's in effect.
Okay.
If I understand this correctly, if wetlands and stormwater goes into a different part of the county code, then we no longer review anything having to do with stormwater or wetlands development?
No. No, if it's...
So it shouldn't change any enforcement mechanisms that currently exist. So the drafting would, with the exception of the mandatory state requirements for the notice for wetlands, they would just go elsewhere in the code. The only consequence that I can think of offhand to the planning commission is that you would no longer have to be consulted for future changes to those ordinances. But those ordinances are mandated by state law, so there's very little likelihood that the board of supervisors would be making changes that are other than mandatory.
Again, I'll go back to my earlier request. Can you give us a listing of what sections out of this ordinance are going to be pulled? If we pull the stormwater and the wetlands sections?
Tori, I think you had a slide in your presentation. Would you mind pulling that up again if you can? Would you mind pulling that up again if you can? If I can add a little more clarity to, in the draft ordinance, they're already pulled, I believe. If that's the case, they're not. They don't show up in the new ordinance. They no longer show up at all.
Okay, so they've already been removed in the draft? It's all...
Correct, yes.
Okay. I'm going from an old, from an old hard copy from a couple months ago. So, mine still have all that in there. I'll have to go pull up the latest.
So, stormwater and stuff, is it... If you just have to meet the state code, is there anything we really are concerned with?
No.
Then I'm good.
Yeah.
Not with stormwater, but with wetlands. I mean, we are a recreational community. We're a recreational county and the wetlands are an essential component of that.
Yes, but I'm saying that stormwater, wetlands, all that stuff is controlled by state or federal.
Yes, but in some cases, they direct it back, if I'm not mistaken, to the local wetland administrator of a county and so forth. I've seen where that occurs.
Yeah, but do the state set minimum standards?
It's a topic that's so important to us that we want to make sure we still have the opportunity to at least make a recommendation on it. I mean, we can still make a recommendation on it in our...
Did we have anything in our ordinances that were more restrictive than the state standards?
What I can provide for you to answer an earlier question is that your current ordinance, Articles 13 and 15, were the stormwater management and wetlands regulations. And we pulled those out. We did like basic reorganization just because some things felt like it didn't have a good flow. But, we didn't change any of the texts because it is just state code mandated. And so, it's essentially just pulling out, structuring it to have a nice flow and then handing it off so that you all can adopt it as a separate code. Because what we've seen in many counties is that they will have a portion of their county code that's just environmental related. So, wetlands, stormwater, there's another one.
Erosion.
Erosion, sediment control, thank you. And so, all of those are comprised together in the county code to be an environmental chapter of your county code. One reason we recommended pulling that out too is because the enforcement piece and the charges and fines that can go with these are different than your zoning ordinance. So, it makes it easier to enforce and follow the state code fines if it's separate versus trying to parse that out within the zoning ordinance.
Well, and you just said that it'll come through the commission for adoption or recommendation for approval. Right?
So, the action you take tonight, if you make a recommendation on the draft, the draft proposes that they are no longer to be part of the amendment.
Of this ordinance package, right?
Correct, yes.
But, the separate wetlands code, would that come to the planning commission for review and recommendation? Or would that go directly to board supervisors since it's all going to be governed by federal or state code? Really, we have nowhere to weigh in?
The drafting would go directly to the supervisors.
Okay.
And remember, the state code is minimum. You know, it's the minimum threshold. And the locality can always, can usually impose more stringent standards or more specific standards. And we lose our voice on those matters.
And that's why I was asking whether we currently had, whether we had anything in previous drafts that was more restrictive than the state minimums. Kind of the new one here.
Not to my knowledge, because I'm not familiar. I'm not familiar, but I think these issues are going to get more sensitive, more controversial and more necessary for the tourist economy and the economy we anticipate having.
My memory's not perfect, but I cannot remember us ever doing anything other than asking these folks, does this proposed project meet stormwater, you know, wetlands requirements? And when they say yes, we are pretty much done with it. I really can't remember us ever trying to add to those requirements.
And, but most lots as well, isn't building lots, plats, parcels, are pretty clearly marked with RPA areas. So, those aren't necessarily, I mean, it's delineated pretty well to start with, right? So, I don't think we...
Right. And the only thing that can go in the RPA are recreational and marine-related businesses or events. And, you know, the fact that Stafford County and Spalsylvania County have not instituted more stringent standards than state minimums is why those places look like they do today. That's my point.
I can just say some of the frustration here is it's not the first time we've been at the, what we think is the finish line. And we've got a recommended motion that is complicated. I mean, it would be nice to say we're done with it, but what it really says is we're kind of done with it. Can we move it along anyway? It'll come back around to you. And that's just, it's not ideal. And, you know, I think we would like to come in here prepared before being presented with, you know, situations like this where we might want more time. And now, we're being pushed against, you know, we got to get this done because it's part of what we've been working on for two years. And so, we don't want to stop that momentum. I mean, I don't think any of us want to stop that momentum. But, I think if we can't feel comfortable with it and we don't have time to figure out what the consequences of this decision is going to be, it can just be frustrating.
So, what would you recommend?
I'm struggling. I mean, I came in, you know, nobody wants to come in saying that they've made a decision already, but I mean, I came in prepared. We'd worked on this for so long. I certainly respect what Mr. Decorder is saying about, we don't know what the consequences of this decision are. And I think King George has been in that situation so many times where we make a decision and we don't understand the consequences of it. And, you know, I don't want to bring up all the things that, you know, the projects that come to mind, but it happens to us.
Well, and I truly appreciate your comment, but I guess from my perspective, we don't know what we don't know until we're faced with it.
Yeah.
And this document, just like every other document we work with, is still a living document. I mean, we, in the 20 years or so I've been sitting up here, we are, I don't want to say routinely, but we frequently make changes to these ordinances. And I'm sure we'll make changes before we get five years down the road. So, this is a major undertaking and I think it's immensely better than the one we're currently working under if nothing, if for no other reason that it's easier to understand by the developers and the citizens of the county. So, I would sort of like to go ahead and forward it over based on our comments tonight. Even though it doesn't have the wetlands and that stuff in it, that's already been pulled out. If we get, you know, a year from now, we as a body decide that that's not working, we change it then.
That's exactly right. So, this is effectively re-establishing the baseline. But, all of these ordinances and the decisions, they're not absolute and final tonight. That's, you know, really our charge is as these ordinance kind of take shape and we see places where we want to make adjustments, we just surface that ordinance or we surface the issue and we draft a recommendation to the board of supervisors.
Yeah. If we see a project come before us and we go, wow, we really missed this aspect and it's not in our current ordinance, then we add it.
And we've had that on a couple.
We might have one out there that we don't like that got around it, but we capture everything in the future. I don't know about you, but I'm learning every time I see a project.
I'd like to point out that we no longer see every project. We don't see the projects. If they are conforming and they're administratively conforming, we don't see them. We don't know what's going on until they break ground. So, you know, the sort of built-in, you know, antenna is gone. And another issue I'd like to get some clarity on is the military impactability area overlay district, which is in Dogland District in my district. Has that been defined? Do we have a map?
Not to go down a rabbit hole, but we gave the base the opportunity to provide us information to do an overlay map and they declined. So, when we're ready, we'll do a recommendation for an overlay map and then I guess they'll simply comment on it. But, I mean, I wouldn't hold up this process for that. I wouldn't hold up this process over wetlands.
If the base did not provide input, then we should go ahead and make our own. It's an economic development area the same way that the historical corridor overlay district is or the, you know, it is an ECD function. It's a planning community development function.
It is, but I just feel like we're kicking the can down the road on this decision for this revised ordinance unnecessarily when we can come back a month from now, three months from now, do just what you're talking about, draft an overlay map and take care of it. And we can do the same thing for any other issue that we're wanting to. So, I'm sort of anxious to get this done, I guess.
So, are we ready for a motion? Take it to the bridge. All right. Yeah. Okay. So, motion for case number 2311Z S01. Recommend approval. I move to recommend approval of the zone ordinance in its entirety as presented with an effective date, 1 January 2024. This recommendation will comply with a delayed effect date as discussed at the September 26, 2003 joint work session and will provide adequate time for the board of supervisors to carry out their consultant's recommendations to separately adopt ordinance to implement the following laws in a chapter or article of the county's code separate from the consolidated zoning and subdivision ordinance, Article 13, Stormwater Management, and Article 15, Wetlands, of the current zoning ordinance, Appendix A of the county code.
Motion's made. We have a second.
I'll second it.
Call favor? Opposed? Stained? Passes? Okay. Old business, we have none. New business, we have none. We have a new director. Your report, please, sir.
We do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Touch on that, Mr. Pankati's last day with the department was October 27th. Take a moment, we are very appreciative of Lewis. He carried a very heavy weight for this department for a long time and he will be severely missed in his absence and not having anybody else left. I was appointed to the interim director position. We also hired a new permit technician, Sandra, and a new scanning technician, Courtney. And after this report was published, we actually extended an offer to Jennifer Little, who accepted the planner position and will be starting shortly. For the month of September, we did six new single-family dwellings, bringing the yearly total to 135, a total of 78 permits for a total revenue of $73,651. It's about $5,000 lower than the previous month, which is on trend with years past, usually in the winter months, residential stuff starts to slow down. On the other side of the spectrum, we've been getting more major applications. We received two major subdivisions, Wellview Estates. This is off of Cornwallon Road. This is 43 single-family residential lots. This would be an A2 cluster lot, cluster plat, served by private water and septic. And then, we also received Hopyard Farms, Section 10. This is the last residential section for the development. 54 lots is owned R3 cluster, public utilities. We also received the Westbrook Home rezoning. This is a request to conditionally rezone 19 acres from R1 and R3 to R3 and C1. Proposed development of 121 single-family dwelling attached townhome units, 8,500 square feet of commercial retail space and about 3,500 square feet of commercial fast food space. This is off of Route 3 behind Sheets and the O'Reilly's. And then, to bring back up the training facility, we also received the Kensington Farm rezoning. So, this is a rezoning and a special exception to rezone a portion of the property, about 10 acres from industrial to A1, special exception, preliminary site plan. This is tentatively scheduled for your next meeting date. On December 12th, they sent out notifications today. So, that'll be coming in the near future. And that's it.
Congratulations, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Enjoy. Excellent report.
It is.
Other business. I do have a question. Mr. Decorder was stating earlier about us not being aware of certain projects that really don't have to go before the board. I think, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, we addressed that by having those projects implemented in the manager's report. Is that not correct? Very well. I just wanted to make sure that we're aware of that.
For the more major cases, yes, sir. They are all in the director's report. We don't keep track of like the boundary lines or minor subdivisions, things of that sort. That was part of your package, yes, sir.
With that, we have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
You have a second. Call favor?
Amen.
As you're adjourned, I just want to thank you all for your efforts over the past couple of years. It's been a pleasure working with you all, some in long hours of the night. So, I just appreciate it very much and I'm happy to have helped you along through the process.
So, I guess we're not going to see you all anymore, huh?
We won't see each other anymore.
Best of luck, best of luck. Thank you for all your help and assistance.
Motion passes, we are adjourned.